It's 9:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 16th, 2023 Work Session of Limestone County Commission. Public comment, Mr. Wayne Kirkendall is running a few seconds behind. He just called. He had went to the other place, so he will be here in a minute. So I told him he was already on the agenda. Have we got any more public comment?
Yes. Kathy Richardson.
Kathy, if you don't mind, step off to the mic, please. How you doing this morning?
Good morning. My name is Kathy Richardson. Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here today to refresh a request on behalf of Lori Missona for help with a rehab facility in Limestone County. I'm also here representing the grieving parents of our community as I buried my child that I lost to addiction, October 25th, 2018. He was 23-years-old, a father, a loving son. He just fell into a problem that can be helped, can be prevented in the first place, and they can come out on the other side as a productive member of our community. However, there are no resources in our community for anybody with addiction. They have to beg and plead and wait for days and days and weeks to get into a rehab facility, to get into a, any type of treatment facility. They're told no over and over. Then we take these people out of our community to get the help that they need. They get sober, they learn how to live a sober life, and then they leave our community. And they go on to the communities that did help them. They don't come back. The drugs are not going to go away. They've gotten better, they've gotten worse every year. I've lived here 47 years. My entire life I've been in Limestone County. I graduated from Elkhart High School. My children graduated from West Limestone High School. And I'm here to tell you that what's happening is a tragedy. There are so many parents in this county that I've met since 2018 that have stood beside that casket and said goodbye to their children for something that could have been helped. When those people reach out, they need help then. They don't need help later. But we need to be able to give them the resources in our area, in our community, to help our own communities. If we can't help them, if we turn them away, why would they feel the need to go anywhere else? If your own community can't help you, why would you go to anybody else? I pray today that none of you ever stand beside that casket, but let it be known that each and every person in here, addiction can touch your life in one way or another. Nobody, nobody is safe from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lori Missona.
Lori.
As y'all know, I'm here to advocate for Recovery House Recovery Services for Limestone County. You already have my request, but I want to go into a different aspect of this conversation. When I met with Attorney Steve Marshall at an event he and I shared a platform with a year ago, Mr. Daley knew about that because I came back and I called, I told him what Steve had said to me, how to go about, you know, applying for the opioid funds. Okay? What I'm here to address today publicly, the last meeting two weeks ago, I texted our chairman on the county phone after the meeting was over, and I said, "I don't understand why you're not returning my calls or won't set up an appointment to meet with me," because I've been asking for like two months to sit down and talk to him about the plans of us moving forward. I find it hard to believe that Steve Marshall would have allocated funds of $300,000 if he already didn't have guidelines as to how they would be applied. Steve and I had a very in-depth conversation about this situation. At 9:35 p.m. on the same day, Mr. Daley, you texted me back on the county phone. I texted you during business hours. And what you said to me, I expect a public apology from you, because what you said to me was about the task force that was being put together to work with the governor to see how the funds could be distributed. That's fine. You could have picked up the phone and called and told me that. You could have told me that standing here in this room the past two times I've been here. But when you went on to say, "Thank you for your message. I just buried my son and my dad." I had lost the man that raised me, buried him the same day you buried your dad. We all have personal tragedies, but when we show up to work and our suits and ties are our best dress, there's jobs that has to be carried on. And I feel for you because my family's suffering too, also in the area of addiction, because I've got a daughter that's been out the streets for 15 years and I'm raising her three kids. But when you said to me, Mr. Daley, you would not put yourself in an unlawful situation to go to jail over spending this money that you weren't sure how it was allocated, and you would not ask your commissioners to put theirself in an unlawful position? I didn't ask you to put yourself in an unlawful position, sir. I've tried to make an appointment with you for two months to sit down and let's talk about what's going on in this program, what direction can we go? And it is documented by the messages that's left in your office. But I do not feel as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a human being, that you had the right to come at me the way you did in that text. I think that was in very poor taste. And when you're out running for election and you tell people that you're going to do the best they can to help them, the best they can to help them, all I've done is exercise my right to come up here and ask you to help these people that are losing their lives every day, like the girl this weekend that was a victim of domestic violence, and we were able to rescue her from a crisis and get her help. It happened right here in Athens. And I'm just mind-blown at the way that I thought that your best interest was the people. And maybe you have a personal thing with me, I don't know. And if you do, that's fine. But I respect you, Mr. Daley. I have never disrespected you. But the key to anything to be successful in anything you do in life is communication, and the communication has not been there. I know people that have walked in your, in your office, and you've had open-door policy. You donated a building with the vote of the commissioners to another organization months and months ago, and that building's still sitting over there from my last update, still in the attorney's hands, the paperwork, still full of the county stuff, and we were supposed to start advocacy in that building months and months ago. That never happened. And so I'm not with that organization anymore because there's people out here dying, and I needed your help. And I just want you to know, I would appreciate an apology. If you don't feel you owe me one, then that's on you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Missona. Next, please.
Doug Higginbotham.
Mr. Higginbotham. How you doing this morning, Doug?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Doug Higginbotham. This will be my third time to speak at this meeting here. I have a farm on Morsel Road, two miles north of Dick Davis. And the issue I've got is with the development that's on Metta's Road that joins my property on the backside, a drainage problem coming to me. It's been a, they've gone in and flattened the land, and once they flatten the land, they have changed the natural drainage of that land forever, okay? That's a done deal. It's going to change the flow of it, and a lot of it's headed towards me, and I don't like that. All right. And the engineer, county engineers could correct me. I think y'all just completed step five pre-approval process in early September on that property out there. And I think you have a total of six pre-approval processes before you make a final inspection. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. They've requested a final inspection, but they are also aware.
All right. In early September, the county engineers went out and did an inspection on this property, okay? Did a pre-approval process, step five, one more to go. Since that time, about the 15th of September, a developer, the developer went in and installed a 70-foot-long, four-foot drain pipe in the bottom of a basin, not even a holding pond, and it's pointed directly to my property 10 to 15 feet away. Now, this pipe has not had any pre-approval steps, and it's not on any plats that the county engineers have. So the developer must be working off a different set of plats, from what I can see. So as far as I'm concerned, that pipe doesn't exist, so I want it ripped out. It's not on any plat, so it disappeared. I want it gone. I'm going to play like it's not even there, okay? On Tuesday, October 10th, I spoke with Morel Engineering, Ben Duncan. It was late in the evening, and we talked briefly. They're looking at some other alternatives for this draining issue. We've yet to meet, okay? So a face-to-face meeting. So I've got a suggestion for the county engineers and Morel Engineering. There's a piece of development going on on Brown's Ferry Road, east of Morsel Road, and it's east of Bowler's Road, one mile, and it's on the right, so that means it's in Madison County. That developer looked like he did an excellent job of laying out the housing, and he built a holding pond. So he has pipes going into that holding pond, and guess what? There's no pipes coming out of it, so they're going to contain the water on that development project, okay? So I'll get to that in just a minute. And this is to the county officials. In my opinion, y'all need to start considering the impact to landowners around these development projects and not allow the developer to do whatever they want to and get by with it, okay? We're the taxpayers here in this community. We need some visibility in this. I shouldn't have to be up here pitching this, trying to save my farm, but I am. I put, I put a, you know, this is my third time, so I think I've put forth an effort to try to get this worked out. I worked with the county engineers, and they've been great. Markham's done a good job. But in my opinion, things are just moving too slow. Winter time's getting here, rain's fixing to set in, and I've got a real problem sitting behind me. Here's my proposal. I want the drain pipe removed ASAP. It's never been pre-approved for anything, and it's not on any plat that the county has. So like I said, it sounds like the developer's working on his own set of plats, okay? And I'm not telling you what to do, Mark, but I'd be probably doing some checking on that. So that drain pipe came from somewhere. And I'm going to suggest to the developer to start digging a holding pond, a real holding pond. I don't care if you have to dig it all the way to China, but I want that water caught on that holding pond, okay? Dig it as deep, as wide, as long as you think it needs to. Y'all should have the calculations on the water, so that'll be the engineering problem. All right? That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham.
Janice Higginbotham.
Janice? How you doing this morning?
Thank you. I appreciate it. My name is Janice Higginbotham. I'm the wife of Doug Higginbotham, and I hope I can be as calm and diplomatic as he has been until today. I'm here to ask for immediate attention, just like Doug is asking for, for the drainage problem adjoining our land. This is the third time, as Doug has mentioned, coming before this commission, and the results we've received are a complete debacle. I've never seen anything like it, the way the commission operates in this county. My previous career was in construction lending, 30 years of it. I approved plats, plans, specs, change orders, which apparently change orders don't exist in this county. I may be wrong, I hope that I am. Doug and I have tried for six weeks to get something done on this property. I've taken more pictures. I don't know if the courier is here. I spoke to them. That's next. The citizens of this county are going to find out that developments are going in, building is taking place, and it's not being processed, much less followed. And again, I consider this commission to be a complete debacle. Maybe, maybe the growth of this county has gone so fast that you can't keep up with it, but by golly, hire some people. Hire some people to help protect this county. This is ridiculous. As Doug just said, we want this drainage pipe removed. This is not going to work. I don't care what you have to do to it. And we would like to have a meeting between Mr. Daley, our representative Danny Barkstall, Mr. Massey, Morel Engineering, doublehead the developer. Let me see if I've missed anybody. And we want it by Friday. We've had enough. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jimmy Crafts.
I'm Jimmy Crafts. I own land that is adjacent to the Walton Creek Development. I have something that you might consider a unnecessary request, but at age 85, I've lived on the land all my life. I have a house that I built 50 years ago, just to the east of where the first development I never worried about what was going to happen on the property adjacent to me because from Pepper Road, for the 2,000 feet south, I was surrounded by woods. I didn't care what went on back there. But when the tornado came through in 2011 and destroyed about 90% of the woods on my farm on that side of the road, I am now basically where I can see anything that happens to the west of my house. I spend a lot of time these days in my sunroom, and there is a strip beginning about 350 or 400 feet, just about where the common area ends, where the tree line is almost nonexistent. So I have a frivolous, you might say, request. I would like that property line clearly marked, particularly across that narrow strip. I don't want one tree, one blackberry behind, or bush, or whatever it is, removed that is on my side of the property line. I know the drawing shows the northeast corner is right on top of the survey that I had 20 years ago by Athens Land Survey. But I don't see any markings along the line, even though the plat drawing indicates each lot has been, has a survey point on it. We went back there even today. The next point is 1,050 feet back, again, where I had a survey. So I'm just asking that, done with engineering, the developer, just be very careful when you take down any trees on that property, that you do not cross over where I can, where I'll be looking into the top of 45 what looks like matchbox-sized houses along Pepper Road. Those lots are like 60 feet by 80 feet, and there's about 40-something of them right along Pepper Road. And if I'm sitting in my sunroom, looking slightly northwest, I'll be looking right to the top of that west. Also, I have an issue. That land will be developed, just one minute, that land will be developed on back, I own 2,900 feet, the whole length of the property that will be developed, and there is a drainage problem with that. I have a drainage ditch that's been through my property, empties onto that property, and eventually meanders through the woods and empties into the branches just west of there. The bridge is on Pepper Road, just south of Nancy Thornlam's. So I want to make sure that that particular drainage situation is addressed. I may not be around when Phase Two or Three, whatever, but my kids will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sheila Bannister.
How you doing this morning, Sheila?
Doing good.
Oh, doing good.
Good morning. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sheila Bannister. And today I'm speaking to ask for your leadership in defending families and the communities of Limestone County. In recent months across the state of Alabama, we have learned that public libraries not only provide pornographic material to the public, but they house it in the children's section. Our county library is not guiltless. Let me be clear in what I mean by pornographic material. The Oxford Dictionary defines pornography as "printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activities intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings." I'm not talking about banning books like The Scarlet Letter. I'm talking about books that have both verbiage and images that go beyond the pale, that describe not only sex in vulgar ways, but also in violent and perverse ways. Books that teach young children that their parents and doctors cannot be trusted and spout false teachings designed to confuse young minds and prey on their innocence. Pornography addiction has become a public health crisis, destroying families and individuals across the nation. According to Getnext Market Data, about 200,000 people in the U.S. are considered porn addicts, and over 40 million U.S. adults regularly visit porn sites. 35% of all internet downloads are porn-related. The average age of first exposure to pornography is 13-years-old, and 50% of all partnerships suffer due to issues associated with pornography. Furthermore, the American Psychological Association research shows that pornography harms the brain almost exactly the same as drug addiction, and the younger the exposure starts, the more likely the subject will become addicted. While the First Amendment of the Constitution protects the right for access to print and read any written material, it does not provide the right to having the public pay or provide access to that material. We would never say that taxpayer dollars should provide meth to the drug addict, yet we find many who would say it is the public's library roles, it is the public library's role to provide porn. Being a mother of an eight-year-old, I have first, excuse me, I have firsthand experience at knowing how much the public library plays an integral part in the development of children's minds and their ability to read, not to mention the fact that homeschooling parents and families use the library on a daily basis. There are many people in the Athens leadership who don't believe that this is a problem and are ignoring the fact that we do use the library as much as we, as we do as young parents of young kids. With Limestone being one of the fastest-growing counties in the state and most of the growth being in the county limits, I implore this commission to take a stronger leadership role in the direction of our local entities such as the public libraries. Do not give up on the county's role and influence in the library system. Actively select and appoint the two members of the library board that the county has, and use whatever influence necessary to protect our children in the future, including the library. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Phyllis Condon.
Morning. How are you? Doing good. Hi.
Hi. You should know me by now, but for the record, my name is Phyllis Condon. I'm with the Limestone Animal Alliance. I live in Limestone County. I'm here again to request the status of a new animal shelter, not a dog pound where they euthanize animals after 30 days, which is what we have now. It has been a year, and we don't appear anywhere closer to building or purchasing one. I inquired about the status of a new shelter, but received no information. Addressing a few issues from the September meeting, because I haven't been able to be here. A, a one-year contract was awarded to Dr. O'Connor, and she is leasing the shelter building from Dr. Pittman for four years with an option to purchase in two. Why would she want to do that unless there is support between her and the city and our county government that we have not been made aware of? She is supposedly going to fix it up. Well, you can slap a coat of paint on it, fix the AC, et cetera, but the shelter building is like a old car that has mega mileage on it, but you just don't want to spend the money on a new car. So you keep shelling out money year after year after year until one day you have to either rebuild the thing or buy, or purchase a new one. We also have to address the spay and neuter situation around here as well. If you address this situation, there will not be as many unwanted animals in the shelter to begin with. We have partnered with North Alabama Animal Warriors to work on spay and neuter and continue to do so. According to a vet survey we sent to, to eight vet offices and 22 vets, only 10 vets answered the survey questions. You have the hand out there, sorry. Out of those 10 vets, when asked if Limestone County needs a low-cost spay and neuter program, six said no. One needed more data, and two said yes. The vets may say they care about animals, but their answers, or lack thereof, do not reflect it. Concerned for cost, grant writers should be able to look for funding for a new shelter. There are also donors that could be found to fund some of the shelter as well. According to the county, for the coming year, vet services alone are budgeted at over $565,000. A new shelter could be paid for in a short time with this budget. The mayor has been able to acquire funds for the park that he wants. I'm sure funding can be found for a shelter as well. Commissioner Barkstall inquiring about a humane society? A humane society would be wonderful to have, however, it would not replace an animal shelter. Humane societies pick the animals they want to take in, or are a no-kill shelter and are mainly funded by donations. Animal shelters are usually subsidized by the city and county government. You would have to reach out to a humane society organization to see if they would be interested in putting one in our, in our city. Do we really need an animal shelter? All of you have taken a tour of our current shelter, and after seeing it, I don't see how you can say we don't need to do anything. I have provided you with a lot of information. There's a lot more out there. Done research for you when asked, offered my services if needed, and communicated with all of you the best way I can. However, communication is a two-way street, and it would be nice to be reciprocated. The new year is here. Please don't let another year go by without doing something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Elizabeth.
How are you this morning?
Good morning. I'm good, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Stewart. I know most of you. I'm a mom here in the county and Athens City. I emailed all of you about two weeks ago concerning library policy. As all of you know, and as Sheila mentioned, the governor has highlighted via a very thorough investigation into the state's various county and city-run library programs. And she has put out a lengthy letter last week urging all local libraries in each county to develop their own policies to safeguard children and provide parents an avenue that allows for a quick removal of sexually explicit books, and has also found that the current process of using book relocation forms is not adequate, is too time-consuming, and ultimately the engagement of the American Library Association in every policy across the state, every county policy, including the Athens Limestone Library, actually prohibits, to a large extent, any book removal or relocation. And so when I emailed all of you, my request is the same as it is today. The request is that, as a county commission, you all would urge the library board of trustees to disaffiliate with the ALA. There is no reason that we cannot have locally-run and written policy that is just suited for this county. And also to rewrite the sexual content selection criteria that's currently in the policy. These are two very easy requests. This is the current policy in the Athens Limestone Library manual for sexual content. It simply states sex. It is the responsibility of the library to provide an adequate quantity, books on sex that are authoritative and up-to-date. These books will include a broad range of physiological, psychological, and moral, ethical treatments on the subject of sex. This includes works that reflect changing attitudes and depurters from traditional mores. Books reflecting different social and religious backgrounds should be provided. Books acquired, which are designed for all age levels of readers and of varying levels of education. Specialized and clinical works written for, are generally outside of the scope of the library's collection, i.e., we don't want books on biology, just everything else. And number three, judgment of fiction is made on the total book rather than parts that may be objectionable. So... So again, this section ought to be actual criteria on child's ages, juveniles' ages, and the young adult ages, and what material is appropriate and inappropriate. It should be objective, not subjective, which is the way it's currently run, and it should be very easy for a parent that finds pictorial pornography in the child's section and/or graphic sex scenes to alert it to a library staff and have it moved to the adult's section, not the child's section. And the request would be for you all to engage in this prior to October 26th, which is the next library board of trustees meeting. It's very important, as in this is a joint resolution library, the board of, the county commission and the city council both fund this library, they both have a say, and I do know that all of the board of trustees currently are appointed by city council. And I would just urge you, please, please, start trying to find Limestone County citizens to get on that board. I've confirmed with the mayor that any Limestone County resident or city of Athens resident can apply and be on there, and I know that there's kind of been a back row seat that the county has taken, but it's important for the county citizens here to have you all voice your concerns over the library. I know my children use this library. I know lots of citizens use this, and homeschool families in particular fully depend on this for material because they don't have access to public school libraries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Kirkendall.
Mr. Kirkendall. How are you doing this morning?
As you know, we have the Storytelling Festival each year. Y'all have been kind and gracious to help that, and we're requesting, even though it's late, we did not get the letter in. The guy that handles that for us put it in the pile of his stuff, and it was late to getting it to you. As you well know, we service all the children in Limestone County, city, homeschool, private school, and all of Limestone County, and the legislators help support that so the children can come free of the 300 so storytelling festivals in the, in the nation. This is the only one where the children actually get to come free. A lot of them get to go, but they have to pay to go, and you know who doesn't get to go then is the poor children. So we're just requesting that you help us again. We'd be bringing, it would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of the, of next week, or week after next, and it's the 20th, the week of the 22nd anyway. And the children will be there, probably approximately 6,000, 7,000 children get to come, and then Thursday night, Friday, and Saturday will be open to the public. We have people coming from all over the United States here. It's a great tourism event because it brings people here for the weekend, spend the night in hotels, buy food and such. So just asking your, your help on this once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
No further comments. Want to thank everybody for their comments, and like I said, we'll be moving on to the rest of the work session. All right. First on here today, we will have minutes from October the 2nd of 2023. Anybody got a discussion with any of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next will be claims amount of $3,252,394. Anybody got a discussion with any claim? All right. Got any conflicts of interest with anything coming in front of the commission body today?
Yes.
All right. No public hearings, resolutions, nor orders. First resolution on here will be approve a resolution authorizing chairman to enter into an agreement with Morel Engineering for the consulting engineering and inspection services of the widening of Allen addition Turn Lane and Service Road 127 for, this will go from Bob Jones Parkway to Upper Fort Hampton Road. This is for the Elton Elementary School, and for the, this is a grant that they have applied for, the school has, and this is just, it has to come through us, and we have to handle the paperwork stuff on them. Mark is.
100% grant, right?
You're correct. I mean, it's not a 100% grant, but it's no cost to the county.
Yeah, the school system is making a match.
They entered into an agreement. We're essentially just handling the, the, as a go-between for the school and the state. The school's paying the 20%, the school's choosing the personnel, everything. This is, this is just.
Money's just flowing through us.
It's flowing through us. There had, we, we were the only entity that could enter into the agreement with the state, but the, but the school entered into an agreement with us to reimburse us at all costs.
So it will be no cost to the county on this. This is just a hand-through, like with a lot of other grants and stuff we do that we had to be the hand-holder for this. Anybody got any discussion with it?
Nope.
All right. Second on here will be to approve a resolution to accept Grace Carter's Sun Construction Incorporated for the construction of the widening of Service Road 127. This is Alabama Road 127, and this will be from Bob Jones Parkway to the Upper Fort Hampton Road for the benefit of the new Elton Elementary School. And this is the same deal. This is their contract, we're just handling it for them. It'll be no cost, nothing to us. Anybody got any conversation with that? Contracts, agreements, and MOUs and grants moving on will be to approve a maintenance agreement and lease agreement regarding the East Limestone Community Safe Room and approve for the chairman to sign any future documents needed for applications and finalization of a grant related to the East Limestone Safe Room, Community Safe Room. Any discussion with this? And this is where we're moving out there and trying to get all this going. Anybody got anything else for that? Number two will be to approve a service agreement between the Mental Health Centers of North Central Alabama for the Athens Limestone Counseling Center to continue to provide juvenile court liaison from October the 1st of '23 through September the 30th of '24, and this is just something we approve every year. Anybody got any discussion with that?
Nope.
All right. Number four, three will be approve a permit agreement with Aldott for, of utility facilities on the public rideways, and approve the chairman to sign any future documents needed for the application for and finalization of sanitary sewer improvements grant. This is at Parfield. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number four will be to approve a contract between the Alabama Department of Corrections and the Limestone Community, County Community Corrections Program for, from October the 1st of 2023 through September the 30th of 2024. Anybody got a discussion with that? And that's like, that's another one of those things we just do every year, approve a grant every year on that, contract every year. Number five will be to approve a public right-of-way use agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number six will be to approve funding for Storytelling Festival, and this will be paid through the Tourism Fund. It's, we have to do this every year, it's just they didn't get their letter in, an amount of $5,000. I went ahead and put it on there, y'all can make a decision on that, but I know we do that every year, and we made, we told them if they didn't get a letter in that they had to come in front of the commission, Mr. Wayne Kirkendall done it today, so. Y'all got any discussion with that? All right. Moving on, budget revisions. We have one budget revision and the amount of $109,225, and this is District 3. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. No emergency purchases, no board appointments, no award of bids. Personnel policy and staffing actions. I'm first on here will be to approve to promote Leila Moore from Network Support Specialist 1, position to Information Systems Security Officer, and this will be retroactive October the 2nd. They was trying to get on the last meeting, but they didn't get it in in time, so that would be the reason it's back to October 2nd. Anybody got a discussion with that? And congratulations, Leila. She does an awesome job. She's running our meeting up here, so. All right. Number two will be to approve to hire Tybrian Malone as a corrections officer pending a drug screening, and this will be effective October 16th. Anybody got a discussion with him? All right. Number three will be to approve to amend the staffing plan under the District 1 to reflect the following, and it'll be two supervisors, four equipment operator threes, two equipment operator twos, two equipment operator ones, and one litter patrol, and two part-time laborers. Anybody got a discussion with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you would, this is a, I'm trying to better utilize my employees, and also with the heavy traffic that we're having to deal with every day out here working on these roads, it's gonna put, put somebody that'll be liable on site on our work sites. But that's the effort I'm trying to make in this, and hopefully it'll work out for us. I think we can get better utilize our employees doing it this way, but that's what it's about, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else got any discussion for this? All right. Number four will be to approve to promote Haven Hams to an equipment operator 1 in engineering, and the next one will be to improve to promote Landon Nevis as to equipment operator 1 in Engineering Department. If y'all want to, we can take both these up in one motion. I know that it would have, might have been a conflict, but Mr. Towns is not here today, so anybody, y'all have any discussion, Robert, take it on the one? All right. I know they're both temporary employees that we're just hiring full-time. I know they came here temporary, we've gone full-time with them. Anybody got a discussion with either one of them? And both of them has done a really good job, so. All right. Number six will be to hire Christie Perry as an archivist, as be at the archives, and that was, she would start November the 6th. Anybody got a discussion with her? And I didn't have her name wrote in the agenda yet because she was working on getting her finalization turned in where she was at. She didn't, she hadn't getting everything before she could turn it in. Anybody got a discussion with Christie?
She'll do a great job.
I think she will. So anybody?
Have confidence in you, Christie. You bet.
All right. And no more discussion with that. We'll move on to merit increases. I only have one today, and anybody got a discussion with Angie? I think Angie Maples is the longest-running employee the county commission has. I think she has been working here since 1980. I believe that's right. I think I looked it up one day. Her and Edra Ann Norton is the oldest two employees that we have. So Angie has been with us a long time.
I would like, I don't know if this is an appropriate place to do that, but Mr. Chairman, you know, we recently approved, I guess, a one- or two-step increase. Will that be reflected on our agenda, whether it's a one- or two-step increase?
No, it won't.
That, I think that needs to be.
You should be able to tell on the merit. You should have a copy of the merit.
You'll have a copy in your paperwork.
Or the merit, where they mark it.
It'll be a one or a two.
And I think on there, you should be able to tell, but it won't be on the agenda.
No, it'll just say, we approved the following merit increases.
What do y'all, does that need to be on the agenda? Would y'all like to have that on the agenda, or what are your thoughts there?
Well, the only thing is, I don't want to cause a, you know, issue with any, cause I hip a roof or anything like that or something, you know, somebody, you know, getting upset because of something. I think it's better that, you know, that's a private matter, or you do a evaluation that's supposed to be between you and the person, you know? That would be my opinion. I don't know. But I mean, we can, but I mean, it's like Angie, you know, I mean, if you want to say Angie's done a great job and been here all these years, you know, I mean, that's, this is a time that you can say that those employees do an outstanding job, you know?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We can look into that either way. All right, doesn't matter to me. Engineers report, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of subdivisions for your consideration. One is, this is the first time I've submitted. It's Little Elk subdivision. It's a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District 3. The other is, has been resubmitted with some changes. It's Walton Creek. It's a major for preliminary approval, creating 122 lots in District, District 2. I thank the gentleman for coming in this morning and, and bringing his issues to us in advance, and I will relay those to the engineer and developer.
Anybody got anything else? Do you want to discuss the strategic thing, or?
Oh, I did for you. I forgot about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did put, I know last commission meeting, I think Danny brought up the, the county strategic plan. I wanted to make sure everybody got a copy. So happened that day, the consultant brought by kind of a project description and, and a project team with references and everything, so I wanted to see if you guys had any questions, anything that you wanted me to address with the consultant, if there was anything there that, that you'd like me to kind of, kind of take a, take an additional step moving forward if there's any direction you want to give me on that.
I think this plan is critical to Limestone County's future growth, you know? We hear a lot about managing growth. Well, we've done a poor job of that. We've done nothing. So I think this is a first step in, in doing that. Now, that's a lot of money, $198,000, but I think that's worthwhile. It will give us some direction. There's probably going to be some high-priced capital projects in the future, and we need to do, know exactly what we're doing when we do that. So these people have a list of clients, is customers or clients on the back. I think we should start calling them and see what kind of experience they had with this provider, and I think we should get moving on this.
I will, if you guys want me to, I will call the, call their references, and I'll give you back a summary report of what, what I received from their references, if that's, if that's reasonable to you guys.
One thing I do have, I know that Mr. Hickinbotham never has been in here. Can we, I'm fine with orchestrating a meeting up on that if we need to this week or whatever we need to do.
Yeah, and I've been in contact with, with the engineer. He has been working on some, on some plans. Like I said, I would, I, I spoke with Mr. Hickinbotham last week, and, and I thought that the engineer was gonna have, I guess, maybe a little bit more in-depth conversation than, than they did have, but I will, yeah, I'll be happy to facilitate, making sure that we have some kind of a meeting to discuss, discuss the project and discuss the concerns.
I know this is a, but that's one of the issues in the subdivision regulations that we were looking into was water runoff and the new, because on our, you know, we didn't, that's one of these things with these new regulations, it would give us more authority with some things like this, so.
I'd like to say something about that. It's really concerning to me that we discover the location, it's not according to plat. And even if there was a change order going to be submitted, were they just assuming that we're gonna rubber stamp the change order? So I'd like to talk to the person on site that was responsible for that. I think he needs to come address this commission, and I believe this commission has subpoena authority. Is that correct, Drew?
That is correct.
So I would like to see that whoever was responsible for that to come address this commission and explain himself. Is that possible?
I can, I, like I said, we can have a meeting this week, and then that, yep, if you guys can make any requests, find out who, who it was that made any, made any changes from what was submitted, or, and I mean, you can make that request at that time, if that's how you want it received.
You know, I think you and I have talked before that as long as they comply with our regulations, there's not much we can do, but I would like for us to be as firm with these developers as we can in protecting our current landowners. Now, there may be only so far we can go according to the regulations. That's one reason we need to adopt our new subdivision regulations. Here again, our new subdivision regulations are managing, a first step in managing our growth, which we have done nothing. So I think you, you know where I stand on developers, and it's concerning to me that they would just do it without approval, assuming we're gonna rubber stamp our change order. I don't know. I always don't like it.
Anybody else got anything else? All right. So moving on, other business. Do you have anything else, Mark?
I do on other business.
All right, well, go ahead, other business.
On our library, I don't know if we've, you know, we fund them, what, $80,000 or $90,000? $80,000. If we hadn't paid them, I would like for us to hold that until we make some. If we hadn't paid them, I would like for us to hold that until we make some determination on what we're gonna do on, on the pornography.
Okay.
I don't know, how do I, do I need to make a motion, or how to?
We'll have to check and see.
Just check on that.
Well, if it's already appropriated, I don't think you can, if they're right, if it's already been paid out.
It, it may have already been paid out, Commissioner. I would have to check into that, I'm not certain about it.
I have some more other business, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The Alabama Code twenty-three-one dash six says, signs, markers, and advertising on the rights of way of state-controlled highways are prohibited except those official signs or markers placed there on by the State Department of Transportation are under its authority. That's the state code of Alabama. As a subdivision of the state, Limestone County is subject to that law. Is that correct?
We're subject to the local law as to the right-of-way signs.
In addition to that, at some point, the members of this body took the exceptional step of asking the state legislature to pass additional, additional law on signs on a right-of-way. That additional law, which was passed by our legislature at the request of this commission, no person or business entity shall erect a sign, any portion of which is on the right-of-way of Limestone County, without obtaining approval. Any person or business entity who fails to secure approval from the county commission for the erection of an advertisement sign in violation of this section upon conviction shall be fined one hundred dollars. Each municipality in Limestone County may regulate by ordinance or advertise signs along any street or road in the municipality, which, that's not gonna affect us. You know, in a prior court case, Judge Higgins, I think, told Mr. Drew and I that we had a duty to keep the right-of-way clear. Is that correct?
That's very nice, Commissioner.
Uh, we're not doing that consistently. I've tried to do that since I got in office, and I haven't been too successful, I don't guess. So, uh, one part of that says, any person or business entity who fails to secure approval from the county commission for the erection of an advertisement sign is in violation of this section. I think we need to consistently enforce that through all the districts. Or ask the state legislature to do away with this regulation. I don't know. I'm going to enforce it because I've talked to the people of District Two, and my feeling is that's what they want. I don't know. How many of you folks would like to enforce that program?
How many would?
So, some of you didn't vote, but I, I didn't hear any nays. So I don't know how you fellows feel about that, but that's my thoughts.
Anything else there?
That's all.
Anybody else got any other business? All right. Not, we'll be moving on. Approve, yes.
Update on the library fund, says it's been paid out.
Okay. Have been paid, all right. All right. Number one on here be to remove the following, to approve, approve to remove the following from inventory, and this is a, old dozer down District Three. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number two will be to approve to establish of a private cemetery on Mooreville Road as a request by the I C D Incorporated and approved by the Limestone County Health Department. County shall not be responsible for, for expansions or cost or maintenance of any cost. Anybody got a discussion with that? And number three will be to approve a revised Calford campground rules. This is effective October the sixteenth. I know they've been going through and updating the rules. I do know that it was some conversation about the rates involved in it. I know Alan is here today, he has had some time to go out and research some rates and things to that effect. And it doesn't matter to me, but I know this is just, the rules need to be updated in some of that form or fashion, and the rate, I mean, we'll have to, I mean, I would like, I don't have a problem with approving both ways, today or retroactive, or however you wanna do it, but the rates, I think, need to be presented to us, and I know you hadn't presented it to us yet, have you? Okay, so y'all just wanna go forward with the rules, and, or do y'all have any discussion how y'all would like to see this done? I know that, I know Commissioner Gatlin asked me a few questions about it the other day, and.
I mean, I'm good if y'all want to approve this now, and if we want to increase later, I think that's fine. I think we need to make sure that the, we want this camping, and when they leave for the year, that they don't want the new rules and new fees and regulations that don't be, so if they plan to come back next year, they can be making their plans to come back to Calford or look at other options. I just want them to come back and realize that, you know, we've raised the rates and changed the rules, so. And they shut down, I have it next, what, next month for?
I think so. I've gotta get with Janie on that. I'll make sure. But, uh, she needs to give us much notice.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't have a problem. My, my concern there is that it's self-funding, and it is, correct?
It is.
And with everything going up and, and the rates that I've proposed, it's not, you know, astronomical, it's just enough.
Is it, are we still lower than the other one that, where's the other one?
Uh, well, I, I've got a list somewhere that I've carried all the local campgrounds. I mean, this, we're cheaper than even the ones that's, you know, on the highway.
Are we just as good as the rest of them? Our facility's just as good? Why can't we be cheaper?
Yes, we, we're doing some upgrades on the wiring, but.
Well, let's go up to what the others are.
I'll, I'll get that list for you.
What I would like to see, and this is, I mean, let's go ahead and approve these rules, and then next meeting, let's, let's go ahead and get it done this month. That way, everybody would know, because when you get out, that way, we give out the rules, you can go out to rates, and you can do it November first.
That's right.
I mean, that would be my suggestion, is, and I think that's.
Chairman, my understanding, talking to Janie, that Calford's shutting down for its normal yearly shutdown, first two weeks, November, April the fourth, the sixteenth, something like that. So if the commission approves new rates, next meeting, that would be an act that the campus came out.
And that would give them notice and everything. That way, when you give them the notice, the rules, you could give them the notice of the new bills, so I think that's. So I would, I would, if we're gonna, if we're gonna change the rates, I would wanna do it next meeting. Anybody got any more discussion with that? All right. So other business, I do have one thing. There's two things I wanna write. First one is, I talked with Angela this morning at the garbage service, and I wanted to bring this, I wanna say something about that. I know that service has done great and all, but Friday, the city had a fatality wreck with a garbage truck. And I was, and I've talked with Angela about it, and she had come to us from, you know, Lawrence County, and they had done this over there. I know we bought these new garbage trucks, they were to put stickers, I mean, you know, they had the big sticker on the back of it, caution, watch for frequent stops or whatever, and I, and I know that that's not gonna change anybody from texting and driving and this, that, and the other, but if we could save one life, you know, with that sign being on there, and I asked her to get us a price on the sticker to put the big yellow caution on the back of the garbage trucks. You know, we got, we have good flashing lights, and we have all this, that, and the other, but I think something like that would be, you know, I mean, as a, you know, as a father who's lost a child in a car accident, I mean, you, another lady that was, lost her life in an accident Friday, her family, you know, would be, you know, anything that, you know, it's not a thankful, it wasn't, it was the city, it wasn't county, I mean, I know that, I hate to say that, but I just know that while we can prepare for any one thing to save somebody, it'd be worth it, so. Anybody have any objection with exploring that?
Yep.
All right. And I got one thing right here, and I'm gonna be done. We have a, Mr. Chris Becker's here today, so the county will be proclaiming October the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth of twenty-three, that is, as Alabama Extension Office Week of the Limestone County, and we, you know, we encourage all Reddys to discover that Alabama Extension Office, I know that I've been out there myself, and they, they have preferred some good services. So I'll go through this right quick, and he wants to get a picture with us during the break for this, and, but, so where it be that the Alabama Corporate Extension Services is the primary outreach and engagement organization for the land grant mission of Auburn University and Alabama A and M University, incorporated with Tuskegee University, and it transforms lives through science-based information solutions. You know, where Alabama Extension is a brick and mortar office in all sixty-seven counties, and I know that they do an awesome job of feeding us down at the A sixty-eight conference, the County Country Agent Kitchen, so that's a part of the Extension Office. You know, they, Alabama four-H annually empowers more than one hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred young people to learn how many different, you know, thousand different Alabama schools throughout eleven thousand educating services, and, you know, I know my kids have participated in the chicken raising, and now we want to do the pig squeal, so I mean, I know how that goes. So that'll be, you know, we just wanna say that this right here is a vital service to the community. I'm gonna stop reading the proclamation because my grand, my great-grandfather was an Alabama senator, and he was one of the one, the reason that the, of the Extension Office Research Farm is over in DeKalb County. He was from DeKalb County, and he lobbied the legislators that it wasn't fair for them to have, not have one in the San Martin region. And I've got the newspaper article, I was gonna bring it in today, I dug it up to where my great-grandfather was one of the ones that said today, they were gonna put five versus three. They were originally just gonna have three in the Extension Services, so he, he was one, so I thought that was interesting, so. Chris, thank you, and thanks for H. I know that he has moved on to a different job, and Chloe has took over, so, isn't that right officially, or?
No comment.
No comment? Okay. Well, anyways, but I know that the Extension Office does an awesome job as far as what they do do, and I know we have, Alan and them has redone the kitchen down there and taught, they've taught children how to cook and things like that, and that's a, you know, not, everybody has the grandmother shows them how to can anymore, so I wanna thank them for that service. And we will recess for fifteen minutes and be back here at ten seventeen.